We'll call our meeting to order. This is a work session of the Mayor and Borough Council of Borough Seaside Park County, Ocean State of New Jersey, filed on Thursday, December 5th, 2024, advertised for 7:00 p.m. Pursuant to the provisions of New Jersey's Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting was properly provided by transmitting the notice of the meeting for publication in the Asbury Park Press and the Star Ledger on January 5th, 2024. Notice of the meaning of the governing body also has been posted in the corridor of the municipal building and in the office of the municipal clerk. Roll call?
Councilmember Imogil.
December.
He will not be here this evening.
Councilmember Condos.
Here.
Councilmember Connor.
Here.
Councilmember Craft.
Here.
Councilmember Rotunda.
Here.
Council President Wilk.
Here.
Mayor Peterson.
Here.
Thank you.
The first item is for informational purposes its discussion of JCPN L's Energy Efficiency Direct Install Program for the PD Building, DPW Building, Wellhouse 6. And turn it over, I don't know, that was the one on one?
So this was that grid that we took advantage of, I don't know, 22 months ago, $10,000.
It can play into that, yes.
This is for upgrades of the heating equipment. Heating, air conditioning equipment. We have, we use some of this paperwork. Go ahead, Karen.
So, yeah, so JCPN L offers incentives to make, you know, you're more efficient. And so our, the folks who are lighting at the bulk of FSG, they did this whole audit of those two buildings, Public Works, this building, and also Wells X, next to Community Center. And there's certain things that we can save money by upgrading our HVAC units.
The heat pumps for the, we run on geothermal for our buildings. We spark thermostats and for lighting. Demand use controlling.
So, so the utilities providing incentives, and then when you look on those sheets of what will be the cost to borough, JCPN L is also offering free financing up to 60 months or anything up to $75,000. So there'd be very little out-of-pocket cost to the town. There's only one building that's over $75,000, then we'd actually have to pay that difference. And also, as Marty mentioned, this community energy grant that we hired, the consultant with the $10,000 grant that we got, and right now we're working on, we're doing the project management, or sorry, management, but we're working through the project with our consultant. And then there's likely going to be some more grant money through the BPU to work on some more energy efficient projects we're going to go. So, and this plays nicely with that. We would get a lot of points for something like this.
I remember the gentleman telling us that when we went to the ball field. He was telling us about that program, right?
Yeah, John Toll.
John Toll, yes.
The reason we put this on the work session here is the timeframe for price increase of federal, I believe.
Right, so, so these numbers that are in this package, these are numbers, so JCPN L has a tool that John Toll loads all of our information in, in terms of our energy use, our electric usage. And so they have to redo that again in January. So we just sent him our most recent electric bills a couple of days ago. In January, they'll run it through this tool again. That gives JCP, then JCPN L will review it and say, yes, you qualify for this, or no, you don't. So we just need to be able, I guess, to give them the go-ahead to take our information, submit to the BPO. We're not committed to anything.
Right.
But then have BPU come back to us and say, yes, you qualify for this, or no, you don't.
Instead of our equipment, the heat pumps and everything are aging out, so it's a plan for us to start looking at replacing them.
And it'll be much more efficient down the line.
A lot of the energy savings will pay for the cost of this new equipment on top of the incentives.
Yeah, yeah.
So we just need to be able to tell FSG, go ahead, give us a JCPN L and see what they say, and then bring it back to the governing body.
I mean, this building looks like it's $58,000.
Correct. Which one are you looking at?
At the, rest of this building, one municipal, plaza, 16th and 17th.
Yeah, and, and up to $75,000 is interest-free financing through JCP. So, so JCPN L would pay the, would pay FSG everything in front, and then we can sub-financing to JCPN L.
So it's a good deal because the cost is $210,000. We end up with only $58,000 bill, which we can finance.
We can pay it for five years.
Forget it's $151,000.
Yes. So that was based, we're running it through their tools, so we just need to do a new look at it in January based on our most recent bills, and then have JCPN L validate it.
Okay. And then cost savings down the line. Absolutely.
Yeah. Yeah, and it also tells you like how much per kilowatt we'd be saving.
Yes.
You know, it was a good move years ago to put in geothermal because all our equipment is housed inside the building, not exposed to the salt. But they still need to be replaced. You know, the time goes on, they're more efficient also. Very good, all good.
Anything else on that one?
Yes, yeah, I'm agreeing, yep.
Done? Thanks for all your work. The next item is a discussion of shared service agreement with Ocean County Health Department for Animal Facility Services. That's listed for consideration, Resolution 2024-341 at tonight's regular meeting. And that's an agreement that this town and many towns have had for many years. Obviously not having the need or the money to have a in-house animal facility. Any issues, questions, concerns from council on that one?
No, I didn't have any, no.
The fee schedule is similar, if not identical, to what we've had, I believe.
It seems that way.
Yeah, this is like a five-year contract.
Yeah, five-year deal.
2029.
Through 2029, yep.
The next item is discussion of a bond ordinance. It's for the NJ DOT Municipal Aid Roadway Improvements to Stockton Avenue. That's listed for first reading introduction and ordinance 2024-26 at tonight's regular meeting. Any background on that one?
That's, that's the street where the, there's an alcohol pipe that was originally there for the ester coming up to Seaside that was capped off when the ester was routed into the new pump stations. So that pipe underneath Stockton is taking on tidal water, and it's parking up through the road. There was a recommendation from Public Works to, you know, to do that street.
Yeah, this ties into the grant from Department of Transportation for $303,000 for an overall project of $553,000. So it's basically roughly $250,000 out of the town's pocket to accomplish this. So that's what the bonds are for to cover that difference.
Any other questions, council, on that one? The third item is some potential dates for meeting dates for 2025, and some that conflict with other obligations and what dates to choose. That's up for discussion. It does not have to be solidified tonight, but could be. And that would go hand in hand to a pre-reorganization caucus type issue as well.
All the dates that were listed here are on Thursdays, so that's a good thing. So it's always the first and third Thursdays.
So the one is the actual reorganization meeting. That's contemplated right now on, it's, a second, isn't it?
January 2nd. Thursday in January.
So that's what we had done in other years, had, unless there was an emergent item of business to put on that agenda, we, we had a, then the two other meetings in January, so it adds up to three meetings in January.
Yeah.
Is that acceptable in everyone?
So what, so you're going to do the 2nd, the 16th, and the 30th?
Yeah.
23rd.
On the 23rd.
Jenna, what, mine has highlighter, are those problematic dates?
Yeah, so those are just days that may have been an issue in the past or might be something for discussion. So April 17th is the Thursday before Good Friday, and I think that was an issue in the past. And then July 3rd is the Thursday, so I didn't know if we wanted to do a Monday meeting for that week again.
That might be a problem, April.
And January 23rd, what's, that's not?
And that was just, I wasn't sure if we were doing three meetings in January and which days everyone wanted to do.
I think that one's okay.
What, and then November 20th interferes with the lead?
That's the lead, but the Thursday is the shortened day. It, it still kind of makes the most sense to do that week.
It keeps us on the same regular schedule. We did that this year.
Yeah, I don't think that one's a problem.
Yeah, so that, that one's fine.
I think we should look at the April.
Yeah, it's, we want to do a Thursday.
I realize that's going to be June 30th.
That's, uh.
That's the last supper.
Yeah.
Holy Thursday for, I'm already might be working.
That's the last supper.
That's bad for.
Oh, okay. So you want to move that to the fourth Thursday?
What's up for discussion on that?
May we do it on the 24th?
Monday, that week's Monday, then?
14th. You have the 14th.
Yeah, that's fine.
Monday the 14th.
April 14th?
That's fine with me.
Is that playing board, that's the next Monday, isn't it?
Yeah, playing board should be the 21st.
Yeah.
Okay.
Seventeen's out, we're going to do April 24?
No, April.
14th, I'm sorry. Okay, 14th. And January 2 for the reorg? That's two that night.
And the reorg 7:00 p.m., is that? Okay.
June 30th for the July 3rd meeting, that Monday's for July 3rd.
So July 3rd.
So is July 3 a problem? We've done it some years, some years we haven't.
I have no problem with that.
I don't have, no.
I think.
I think it's good. Yeah.
Wait, you think which is good, keeping it or? But you said you can't do that.
It's kind of hard.
Yeah. So.
I can go in if I have to.
You're going to what?
Or not come. You said I shouldn't excuse absence.
I'm not one of you.
I mean, it seems like you never know.
And then November 20th.
Yeah, November 20th is not a problem.
So it's just April 14th, that's it?
Yeah, one, the one, one change is that date?
Yes, and then, so then just to be, to make sure I have it, for January, you're okay with the 16th and the 23rd?
And then we're leaving the other one, the one April change.
You're changing, is it what?
I, I don't.
I, I don't care, whatever anybody wants.
It seems like it's always busy, that's not good.
It's always what?
It's a busy weekend, and we, I don't know. I mean, unless there's a real need, you can't do the 10th and the 17th, two weeks in a row, is that too much to do, or is it too many weeks in between? What was June? Then you have one, two, maybe two.
It's almost a month in between.
So if you do the Monday?
So it's going to be, what?
Uh, Monday, June 30th?
Monday, June 30th, is that okay with that? So Monday, June 30th.
Works, I don't really, doesn't matter to me either, yeah. Okay.
Really, the fourth is a bike grade. You gotta go handout ice cream.
Yeah.
July 30th is out.
These kids are rabid.
June 30th, yeah.
Okay.
So are somebody's.
We're increasing the number of face pops.
Yeah, we need more.
Every year we keep going up.
And then Jenna, you put a highlight on the flip side, it has the advertisements for newspapers, and because the Newark, it's not even called Newark Star Ledger, Star Ledger is no longer going to be publishing, but is going to publish online?
Not print publication, but they will, I think in the beginning of 2025 is when they're going to stop doing print publications. So we have to name a different official newspaper in January.
Wow.
Yeah, the Ocean Star was what I was looking at, that publishes in the county.
Ocean Star?
Yeah.
So Ocean Star and Asbury Park Press?
Yeah.
Goodbye Ledger.
Yeah.
I can't imagine some of the Bergen County looking at our community offices.
We publish in the Trentonian.
There you go.
I think I might, is that one of the, there's a bunch of newspapers that aren't doing print publication anymore, so all the clerks.
They're on every day. I used to get it as a kid.
Only Citywide, you know, is just as a weekly, so if you don't get it, it might be combining.
Well, you publish all the dates beginning of the year, and then only a special meeting you have to.
Yeah.
Gotcha. So what's everybody's pleasure? Ocean Star?
Strong feelings on it.
It's more local, I think our people locally, we see it, and we put it on our website, anybody who looked there, so it's not like it's not accessible.
One time we talked about the Borough Official Holidays, too, for that's for the, not, for the union contracts, you know, that's not.
I think we approve them for next year.
Well, we do.
Yeah.
Yeah, we do.
They were the same as.
So that then concludes the written agenda. I have two things, anyone else have items for, yes, Karen?
I think between the Recreation Committee, Karen had reminded us that we have a deadline if we'd like to apply again for the recreation grant that we've received in the past. So hopefully we can apply again, and I know you said it takes time to pull that together. But if we, if Karen permission, start working on that, hopefully put something together and then bring that back, either would you propose like at the next meeting in December or January? Where we have to be prepared for, I think, targeting like mid-January, we have that meeting was 23rd.
It goes due the 33rd, it needs a resolution.
Right, so we have to back up from that. They give you the 23rd, is the meeting before that?
Yeah, if we can have a resolution on the 23rd, and that gives me time to write the grant, get it to the Recreation Committee to review and for input, for the, you know, the governing body and see what their thoughts are, so.
Anyone have a problem?
Nope.
I think that makes sense.
Did you get a chance to look at that email from that actor, what's it do to fire department grant?
Not since the second.
Look at that quickly, because the deadline's December 20th.
Yeah, I thought Bob Cordman was handling all that, so, I know he started it.
I'll get the call, I gotta see it for it.
So that's separate, that's a separate topic, both again, is how, okay.
That's it, that's fire department.
Yeah.
Okay.
I had two things, and I know Karen, Marty, and all of us have information, more information, they both happened after this went to print and we circulated within the last day. Both, I think, need some action in terms of preserving our position as a borough. The first entails a lot of work, a lot of effort. We were painted as the bad guys with the JCPN L, and they had a proposed, and still have an ongoing project, putting a cable under the bay, a placement cable, and we were concerned about a number of issues, and the safety of the children, the boaters, the kayakers all on that side by the pier, disruption of the pier, and also the environment, the bayfront environment, and especially the foliage, the old growth, many of it was planted. And we had an unfortunate situation in the past in Seaside Park where we had a whole host of volunteers, and we had experts, and offered free services back in history from Stevens Institute, from Stockton and Rutgers, and the DEP itself had a, her name was Lita Holmes Hood, she had her doctorate, I remember to this day, very dedicated, wonderful person, no cost at all to the taxpayers. We planted large sections of the bay, the bayfront with native growth. Sandy happened, and the state of New Jersey, through the DOT, without any permits, without any, even asking for consent of the town, ravaged that area to put in a pump station, which doesn't work. And you can see the gravel, and it's one of the areas where the water comes in, and the pump station doesn't do anything, but they took out all of that native growth that we planted. So Seaside Park has a history of protecting the environment, and we were a leader. When this came up with JCPN L, another issue, we said, we want to protect, there are cedars there, they've been there for years and years, they're part of Seaside Park, and they preserve, hold the coast in, the bayfront, and within the last day and a half, for no reason, heavy equipment, cranes, trucks, everything has ridden right over the cedar trees in Seaside Park for no reason. Actually, I'm not an engineer, but I don't know, Marty, I don't know, everybody.
14th, they have a nice, at least 10-foot path was just dribbled right over. It takes years without growing, because of the environment that they're growing in. And it cannot be planted just with grass, they need to be replaced with cedars. And other vegetation.
Right.
Included in that, just naming the cedars. But there was no reason for, they had plenty of room, like, I don't understand why they disturbed that area, it's beyond that.
Who's struck, who's struck, right?
The outside contractors that are doing the work, it's, I went there every day when I could get in there, and I will send tomorrow, my drone is not as good as the drones flying around.
You don't have those, it's not you are.
I've got a couple. But I did, I did send the drone up, I have the arrow shots prior to when the equipment was staged of that area, and then now I have what the result of the construction would be.
Can we, can we write them a summons? Destruction of borough property, why not?
Well, I mean, summons is summons, that's a quasi-criminal, we want the trees, we want, at best possible, I don't know how you even begin to, these are trees that have been there.
They're mature.
Yeah, and they're holding in the sand to the, that's one of the areas.
They are, they are absolutely 100% true, what he said on, on all our conference calls that we had, we made that very clear on that area, because that sandy beach area is very important to us, it's different than the other areas there, you know, we have a pulp pit, then we have that nice little sandy beach there, and that's where the water, of course, had to go. So disturb more of that area, it was just, it's just not acceptable. I don't know how else to put it. That was a very precious area.
So I know Steve's been in on the conference calls when we had, and the engineer was Doug Romeyer was working on that with us, and we came to an agreement, they, we got them to take out the area that was dangerous to kids and voters.
The cement pads, next cement pads.
Yeah.
You want to send me the pictures, Marty?
I'll send to you.
Email them to me. Email them, and Mayor, I'll get a letter out.
Put them on notice.
Put them on notice, and we want to demand that they put back what was there. Now, obviously, they can't put back what was there, but at least plant or start the process again. Probably a subcontractor, a subcontractor is going to be an LLC, so with regard to writing him a summons, it's a cost of doing business for people. I think that more important is to try and get replaced what they destroyed. Write it against JCPN L?
It's their project.
That's what I mean.
Yeah, I mean, they're, we know the players because they were all.
I'll make sure they'll, they'll get a copy of the letter, it'll be addressed to JCPN L. They're, they're obviously the, they may have hired a general contractor, this may be a, but they're, it's their project.
And one of the subs is a Connecticut LLC, as I see the trucks down there.
That's correct. So we should, you know, Marty, you should also send it to Doug Romeyer. I probably want to get together with Doug on this, do a letter.
We're supposed to care about that this morning. You know, we're ready.
Doug knows. Yeah, send the pictures to me, but send to Doug also, and I'll call him first thing in the morning. And we'll try and get a letter out.
Yeah, so that, that one would need any.
In a good environment, they would throw back.
I don't think so. Takes years.
Would you want me to tell you? And they keep, they could not take very easily in that environment down there.
About the JCPN L?
Yeah, totally. They would come back and plant them again.
Expectful remediation.
Absolutely. And that it cease and desist of any other practices, I don't know why it did it.
Cease and desist, okay.
Plenty of room there.
Steve, I just sent those pictures.
Great, thank you.
And the other, I don't know if it's unfortunate, but we didn't get notice necessarily, and that, that entails, and I could turn the floor over to Karen knows some of the details, but that entails the sand replenishment project that our engineers had said were fortunate, we didn't need, and there are other issues related to what happened after Sandy and the subcontractors, again, employed by the Army Corps of Engineers demolished our ocean dunes that had survived Sandy. And those fears had led us to have a negotiation process, Steve's office, Steve was involved. The Army Corps would never really agree to fair indemnification or some kind of an arrangement. The governing bodies from years ago hadn't signed any formal agreement, we've never signed an agreement either. And fast forward, I guess, the meeting happened on Zoom, just within.
It was in person and Zoom today.
It was a hybrid meeting, and the end resulted, and we'd also been told that they had cut out, because of the overbidding, that bids came away in what they thought, they'd cut out a lot of the sand, and we were led to believe initially we weren't going to have any allotted to Seaside Park, so we didn't really have to make that decision, but now they're saying they're allotting a small amount, Karen got the.
So on the plans they sent out a month or so ago, they said Seaside Park needed 20, I'm sorry, 110 cubic yards of sand primarily between H and I.
You said 110?
110 cubic yards. And some, and some sand fence replacement and some dune plantings primarily around our ADA ramps. On the call today, they said Seaside Park needs 22,000 cubic yards of sand, they weren't, they didn't specify where, and they also said that work would commence on January 20th. Between January 20th and February 6th, I believe it was, because anybody who does any work in Seaside Park, it has to be done before March 1st because of our beach management plan, because of the plovers and the pamarang. So that was surprising because we hadn't signed an agreement with DEP.
Nope.
So I emailed the point person at DEP this afternoon, a copy of Mr. Zabarski, and just said, this is a little bit of a surprise, because as far as I know, Seaside Park has not entered into an agreement.
Nope.
So.
And that's where we sit? And that's where we sit at this time?
Yeah, so, you know, a year or a year and a half or so ago, when it first came out, they had, Fun Town Beach was included in Dune of Punishment, not this time. It was really just that area between H and I, a little bit on the top of the dune, which ironically is where the plovers nest. So they wanted, they wanted to disturb that.
They happened to have picked the very area where the plovers have nested now, three years in a row.
What they specifically said between H and I?
That's on the drawings, yeah, on the plans. And it shows where the stand of repunishment is.
It was an article. And we lose that sand between H and I?
It really doesn't appear, it's a very wide area, I don't know how, we weren't consulted that I know of, but.
You don't have to accept it, or you have to take that?
Well, I think that's, I think that's the issue, I think.
Want to tell them we don't want?
And one issue.
Put it there, don't expect us to face it.
Right, if they put it there, they shouldn't be disturbing a plover area.
A plover, that's not a problem.
National Fish and Wildlife, people will be very upset, and trickle down to blame for us, so. But the other issue is if they were to put it there, and we hadn't put them on notice, then they're going to give us a bill.
Yeah, the biggest, biggest problem we had years ago is they had this whole repunishment clause, and that when we decide you're going to pay X dollars, and it was an open checkbook for the, and a lot of towns. when we decide you're gonna pay X dollars, and it was an open checkbook for the, and a lot of towns dealt with this issue. And I know Point Pleasant Beach had the same problem, but they only have one public beach, Maryland Avenue, the rest is, you know, the big problem was with Jenkinsons, the Reno family. So they, they had a big war with the DEP over that issue, but at the end of the day, we said, you know, we wanted to have it, we wanted the, our negotiation, my file's this thick, we, our negotiation specificity was, you put us on notice, and we agree, and you tell us the cost, and we determine, that we say, okay, then fine, but we want to be able to say, no. We don't want you to just come dump a bunch of sand, say we needed it, and it's a bill for $400,000, and say, your problem. And they never came to a final agreement that they would do that, so there's no agreement signed with us for state aid, for that state aid. Now, they did the original, we got the benefit of it, nobody got charged, nobody paid for the original, but now when they start these replenishments, concern is, they're gonna hand us a bill for who knows how much. That's why we never signed the agreement.
And you have to keep in mind, H and I, you're talking sand, plus you're talking fencing and everything.
So, I mean.
Get the sand up there somehow.
We're gonna send a letter and say, we never signed the state aid agreement, and stop. Now, question is, if they insist on going forward, do we, we'll have to cross that bridge pretty soon if we're gonna file an order of course and seek a restraint from them.
You only have like a month, though.
Is that stakeholder?
So for the holidays now.
I just want them on notice. And then to not disturb the.
And don't disturb our plovers and everything else, and then we'll go from there.
Yeah, thanks, but no thanks.
We could build our own sand dune, my, and snow fencing.
So.
Usually how it's done.
This meeting, Karen, I didn't, did they give us notice of this meeting, or?
Yeah, back in November, they sent an email out about the meeting. But they just, they just characterized the meeting as going over their plans for beach replenishment. They sent it out to all the towns between Madison Inlet and Hornet Inlet.
Okay.
Now, do we need a resolution, or just authorization adequate at this juncture?
Actually, at this point, yeah, we're gonna have another meeting.
Yeah, we have, we have one, at least one more meeting before their projected start date.
We have a meeting on the 19th.
Yeah.
Okay. Let's see what happens on both of these, and send that on.
Yeah.
Send out a letter, and we'll go from there.
Anyone else on council have work session items, anything? If not, I'll go into the audience, if any public comments on work session items, if you have any, if you could give your name and address into the record? Good.
I didn't plan on having any. These two issues do involve the environment, and I am on the environmental committee, not really here as a spokesperson, looking just as an observer, but.
Need your name for the record?
Oh, sorry, Pat Ursel, Patricia Ursel, 137 10th Avenue. Clearly, the JCPN project squishing up those cedar trees is outrageous, and certainly the environmental committee, the whole town would support you sending a very affirmative letter demanding replenishment. And at the same time, maybe we could figure out a way to replenish that hole at the other end of 14th, where we've already lost a big tree, and we have another tree vulnerable that we've asked about for three years now. I wasn't gonna say that tonight, but since we're talking trees, and the town is supposed to be taking care of it, and Marty tried to explain to me why we haven't been able to do it yet, as did Bill, but we discussed it.
We still had that, we had that conversation this morning.
It's ridiculous not to do something with it, because it is getting worse. So, anyway, and certainly the sand replenishment, would that be to replenish sand on the dune? Not on the beach?
Correct, it's strictly dune replenishment.
Well, they don't look too bad.
We have a lot of things the federal government has helped us spend money on.
Right, maybe they could pour that sand right along the bank.
I do, I do think.
They have different optics.
We maybe shouldn't have to spend money on sand for replenishing those two dunes.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
I agree with you.
Thank you, Pat. Yep.
Tom Joseph, 704 South Bayview Avenue. Just a real quick thing on this JCPN affecting the vegetation on the dune. I'm not sure how it works in New Jersey, only having lived here about seven years, but in the previous states I lived in, one of the things that people like the equivalent of JCPN seem to be deathly afraid of was formal complaints to the equivalent of a public utilities commission. So if there is something like that in New Jersey, and it's the same situation, I recommend we file a formal complaint and do everything we can to bring it to their attention, and maybe that will get JCPN to act quickly.
It would be the BPU, that's, it's a good point.
That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
All right, Glenn.
Yeah, here we go.
That's a good idea. I'll do that.
I got the letters, huh?
Oh, you do?
Got the present.
I got left a man out on the last time.
Let me have, let me have.
Anything else in the public, yes, sir?
I'll have Glenn from Legislative Office call to JCPN place on tomorrow.
Nelson Rosen, 122 West Street. Mayor Peterson, just a quick question regarding JCPN's central power and light efficiency project. You're talking about geothermal?
That's for the buildings.
For this building mainly, or?
Geothermal is used in this building, the Coast Guard building, the well number?
Six.
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 And that's?
Heating and air conditioning.
That's gonna be proven that they can do that efficiently for geothermal?
We've had geothermal for 30 years. The field is out in the courtyard area. They were putting, for the reason is all the equipment is inside the building, and it's very efficient. It's not exposed to the soil, the environment, with backup generator, these buildings are 100% operational during the natural.
How deep do they have to go for that?
I don't remember that, I'm not gonna, not gonna state that. It's a continuous loop, down and up, down and up, down and up.
Do you know what the water table is under this building? Like, fox melon?
You want me to guess on it? Five feet. Five feet, probably.
And that geothermal works with that, huh? Already, surprised.
No, the geothermal, the wells go down in the ground, and they loop back up. It's a continuous loop.
Okay, that's what I wanted to get verification, thank you.
I believe, I believe if I remember correctly, it was 20 degrees, I remember? I believe the temperature of the water is 50 degrees.
You're just so well hit. I remember how much my kid.
All right, so we need your name for the record, I know, it's Nelson.
Rosen.
R O S, yeah, thank you.
D I N, D E.
Any other public comments? Hearing none, I close the public portion, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn the work session and take a brief moment, then begin our regular meeting.
She'll move.
Motion by Councilmember.
I'll second.
Batunda, and second by Councilmember. Losing out here. Anyone opposed?
Now, Thursday's Connor.
Early to lose.
Friday is tomorrow.